Stand and say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Before we get started, I just would like to make a statement on behalf of the board in the district. Last week's presidential election results have put a national spotlight on interactions between people across our country who are openly divided on many issues. Here at home in Amherst, we don't expect everyone to agree on all issues, yet within our school district, we respect different points of view and value diversity, knowing it makes our community stronger. While we are not aware of any specific incidents in Amherst schools, it is a good time to remember that we are one Amherst and very proud of our students, staff, community, and the diversity it represents. Furthermore, I would like to acknowledge our longstanding tradition of acceptance and respect while commending our staff and our students for maintaining a safe learning environment in all of our schools. So with that, I'd like to start the meeting. We have no visitors wishing to speak. We have no special committees that I'm aware of, which would lead us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, I'm pleased to have our first Pathfinder recognition of the school year. Mr. Pigeon is here with some of our fine students and teachers to recognize them for some of the tremendous work they're doing in our high school.
Thank you very much. It's always an exciting time and a pleasure to shine a spotlight on the excellence in our building at Amherst Central High School. We have two of our Pathfinders here with us tonight to present. Jake Bugara and Stephanie Forbes, so you can come up. And we have covered now September and October Student of the Month, and our program for the year is headed up by the Pathfinder Task Force. So there is a whole committee dedicated to each month, and we have two representatives that will be coming out to each meeting to share that excellence that we have in our building and share some good news about our teachers and students. So Stephanie, take it away.
Okay. He's actually not here right now, but Nicholas Hooten was nominated as Student of the Month by Ms. Juliana Curtis. Ms. Curtis states that she nominated Nicholas for his sincere compassion and willingness to help others. Nicholas comes to class every day with a smile on his face and goes the extra mile to help others in his class and make everyone feel welcome and a part of the group. Nicholas has great manners and is also a great student overall. He constantly strives to do more and put in his best effort. Overall, she thinks Nicholas deserves recognition for his character and the influence that he has on students and the school community and atmosphere. Congratulations, Nicholas, for being chosen as one of September's Students of the Month. And next, Molly Sawyer was nominated as a Student of the Month by Isabella Jackson. Isabella stated that Molly is nice to everyone. She has so many talents that include drawing, playing the cello, and taking photos. She even does her own photo shoots with her and her friends, and they turn out amazing. She is never sad and is always upbeat. She has an amazing sense of humor and can make everyone laugh. She's very determined to have good grades and have a social life, too. Isabel is very proud of Molly because she already knows what college she wants to attend in the future for drawing in Los Angeles, California. She's a great friend to many and a great daughter to her parents. Congratulations, Molly, for being chosen as one of September's Students of the Month.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And next, Mr. Christopher Kenzie was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Ms. Kim King and Dr. Kyle Ilg. Ms. King states that Mr. Kenzie is deserving of Teacher of the Month because of his commitment and dedication to his students and the school. He always takes the time to get to know his students in the classroom as well as the athletes that he works with. It's clear he makes an impact on all of them. You often hear Mr. Kenzie walking through the hallways, engaging kids in conversations regarding their classwork, recent accomplishments, or activities they are involved in. It is obvious by the students' responses that they are pleased to be recognized and eager to share their details with him. His high expectations for students help to teach them respect, responsibility, and to work tirelessly to achieve their goals. It would be surprising for a day to go by without one of Mr. Kenzie's students or athlete stopping by his classroom to check in, ask for help, or update him on their progress. His dedication to the basketball program and his players is extraordinary. In addition to practices and games, he spends hours upon hours organizing, planning, and participating in events to further the program and provide our athletes with future academic and athletic opportunities. Mr. Kenzie is an asset to the math department as well as Amherst High School. Dr. Ilg states that Mr. Kenzie has done an amazing job of bringing our school and community together through basketball. This past year, he organized and ran our second annual faculty basketball game during our homecoming week. The event brought not only staff members together from each individual building, but also the community as a fundraiser event to help bring the community together through basketball. Not only has he done this event, but he's also educated and mentored students through basketball and in the classroom. He's a great role model for our students as well as his peers. Congratulations, Mr. Kenzie, for being chosen as September's Teacher of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. And for October, Joseph Dugan was nominated as Student of the Month by Mr. Matt Pendrak and Mrs. Kim King. Mr. Pendrak states that Joey is one of the top violinists in the Amherst Central High School orchestra program. He is a member of Symphony Orchestra, Synthonia, and is a three-year member of Opera de Pitt Orchestra. Joey has also performed his first violin in a string quartet that regularly performs for weddings and other events. Joey has run orchestra sectionals and has wonderful combination of diligence and innate musical ability. He is very well respected among his peers and teachers alike. He is one of the finest students I've had the privilege of working for. Mrs. King states that Joey is a great precalculus honors student. He is always willing to share problem-solving ideas and never hesitates to participate in class. He works really well with his peers and often answers questions in class or to help other students further their understanding. He is definitely deserving of Student of the Month. Congratulations, Joseph, for being chosen as one of October's Students of the Month. Kelly Normandin was nominated as Student of the Month by Liam Montgomery and Gregory Pigeon. Liam states that I nominate Kelly Normandin for Student of the Month as Kelly is a hard worker and puts forth her best effort in every task she is given. She dedicates time and effort into all of her classes as well as the bowling team. She is a great friend and is always there to talk if you're having a bad day or need a friend. She exemplifies traits of a leader, being strong-willed and independent as well as being good at following instructions. She always has a smile to share and a shoulder to lean on, no matter the situation. Overall, Kelly is deserving of Student of the Month because of her ability to go above and beyond in all areas, both in and out of school, as a friend and student of Amherst High School. Mr. Pigeon states that Kelly is a member of the Anime Club and was a huge help at Fall Fest last month. She was in charge of the children's games and spent over two hours entertaining our Amherst children with the Tippitroll game. She was a big part of making the event very fun for younger children and did a great job organizing and operating a very popular and busy part of Fall Fest. Congratulations, Kelly, on being chosen as one of October's Students of the Month. And lastly, she could not be here today, but Mrs. Amy Weir was nominated as Teacher of the Month by myself and Mr. Derek Manzel. I stated that Mrs. Weir is a favorite of all of her students because she is always very caring, animated, and supportive. She does her best to help every one of her students succeed. She demonstrates these traits each day by conducting class in a fun and relaxed manner, being available for help as often as possible, and even bringing cupcakes for her students on their birthdays. Mrs. Weir is very deserving of this recognition. Mr. Manzel states that Mrs. Weir is an outstanding biology teacher that maintains her high-energy teaching style day in and day out. In addition to bringing great energy to class, she is a very animated instructor that is always well-prepared and makes class fun each day. Mrs. Weir has a strong rapport with her students and is able to make learning relevant. Her past experience as a personal trainer makes her a great fit to teach her sports and exercise science elective, and her background as an athlete and avid Sabres fan allows her to connect with many of her students on a personal level. Her former students fondly recall her Weir Cake cytology lesson involving her homemade ice cream cell. Mrs. Weir is well-respected and loved by her students. Congratulations, Mrs. Weir, on being named Teacher of the Month for October.
Thank you to our Pathfinders, and thank you, as always, for the support.
Just one quick comment. When describing Joey Dugan, Mr. Pendrak said it's one of the privileges to work for him, and I think that's a very well-worded statement by Mr. Pendrak because what we do here every day is for our kids, and although it's a job, it doesn't feel like work when we're working with your children, so thank you. Okay. Next up in the superintendent's report, Dr. Sean Feld can give us a report on the very successful Superintendent's Conference Day that he had last week, Tuesday.
For starters, I want to thank the board for supporting Professional Development Day during the school year. We do have our teachers and all of our staff in the Amherst Central School District need to broaden the work they do to enhance the things they do. This particular Superintendent Conference Day, thank you. This Superintendent Conference Day was divided in many ways. I could explain a couple portions of it. We did some whole-group work with our staff. At the secondary specifically, we had an expert come in from Buffalo. She was from the International Institute of Western New York. She spoke about the change in demographics and the changes in the landscape of Western New York with a lot of students coming in, you know, from various countries. Sometimes they, again, might be proficient in a language, other times not. So she spoke to our secondary staff about this change in landscape, but also how we can best support our students that are either ENL or students that are new to our community. So that went well. We had some experts in our field, meaning our English ENL teachers. English is a new language. Our staff also presented some pragmatic approaches to work with the students within our schools. So that was something, that was whole-group. We also offered at Smallwood, Dr. Mike Inbaum works for Summit Services, and the teachers there said, "We'd like to revisit behavior and when you have students that are, you know, making poor choices potentially or going through something, what might be the best way to approach that?" So Dr. Mike Inbaum, fantastic psychologist, works, again, with many students, many staff. He was impressed, too, that there was a great group of people that were there from Windermere as well as Smallwood, and he was able to talk about some of the things that we can do to sort of head things off. And that was something that the staff there wanted, and they're going to follow up with a plan, really to set up procedures and policies down the road, not necessarily punishment and that type of approach, but just to revisit it and come back to it. We also were able to, with our clerical staff, as you know, we've had safety plans that we put in place this year. We had the police department with Paul Alexander and Kevin Brown speak to our clerical staff just about, you know, what if someone was to call on the phone or explaining the plans itself and what are the steps to do when you're in that situation? Or if you see somebody that, again, how do you approach that consistently? So those were some local people we used. A lot of what we also used was some of our practitioners in the field to do some of the training. Deb Custode is here, and she was with the clerical group, which we were able to do an activity also of looking at what are consistent best practices that she went to a conference recently and those types of things that we can do to enhance what we're doing. We had teacher assistants and teaching assistants and aides also, part of TCI Training, which is Therapeutic Crisis Intervention. So again, sometimes we have students that might be bubbling up with behavior or emotions because they were riding on the bus and they might be agitated. So we have possibly four to five adults that might see that child before they even enter the classroom. So this training was a lower-level training, but all of our professionals, again, if it be clerical or teaching assistants and aides, they're very important, so they're vital to the success of our district. So that training went on, went over really well. Some of the higher-level activities that happened within the afternoon were teacher-based. So when we did the training, we talked to departments and grade levels and asked, "What's most valuable to you?" What they were looking at doing was alignment. Secondary level, sometimes sixth grade through 12th grade, we had teachers coming together, say it was social studies or science, talking about the alignment and scaffolding of the work they're doing from the younger level up. We also had some of our special area teachers get together from kindergarten through 12th grade. When I say that's higher-level work, a lot of districts don't get the opportunity to look that closely at their work and compare below and above. It's usually something that comes along over time when you're in a better place, so that was nice to know. And an exciting thing that I've shared briefly, we were able to purchase Google Expedition Kits. So it's virtual reality kits that you're able to, you see the commercials where you hold a viewfinder and you see expressions on people's faces. We have two kits of 30 that we were able to demonstrate with third-grade staff and then also a social studies secondary from sixth grade through 12th grade. So they were able to look at some of the places that, again, you're not able to travel to, especially these younger students, but we would be able to coordinate with the teacher that Donna Freymeyer, our Curriculum Integration Specialist, would set up a plan with the teacher. Third grade was a target audience because they work on world cultures. So just say you wanted to go to Egypt and look at the Sphinx and look at the pyramids. You would literally be able to control an iPad that has a signal that goes out to all the students, and all the students would see the same exact thing, and you would be able to then talk to the students about, "Look to the left," and you'll see an arrow. You might look at the Sphinx, and you're able to, again, all have a similar experience. Our plan with that is to set up preparation with the teachers, do some demonstration at the elementary level, and then within all of our school levels, have an experience for all of the students that are different. It's not to say that, oh, this is going to make them learn so much, but the idea will be able to be one more step of enhancing their enduring understanding. You won't be able to see some of these places or have those experiences for quite some time, so it's, I'll say, an inexpensive way to have an instructional tool like that. We also, just from an administrative standpoint, when teachers did their department work, they were asked to tell us what they were working on and then also submit paperwork coming back that says, you know, "What were those things, and what are your action plans, and what sort of support you need?" So we have that ongoing sort of documentation, but also it helps inform the administrators. I'm able to get that out to the building, so we're in the process of gathering that and redistributing it for future use. And thanks for the opportunity to present, but also to be part of that planning. It's important work. Any questions?
The Google Expedition that you said the target is the third graders, is that, are there future plans for expanding that opportunity?
Yes. We, I'll say it was sort of beta testing. We hadn't used it in the school yet, and we have wireless servers, too, and there's a wireless router with this, so there's some logistical things we thought third grade would be good to start with. I spoke to the elementary principals today about potentially meeting during a faculty meeting and do the demonstration. It would be fun for us to do that here some night, too. But do that demonstration and then do the planning. So we're not, we're not just pigeonholing that. It's just where we started. And then again, with the secondary, we met with social studies, and they've already started to set up some types of planning so that we can go in the classroom. And the concept would be, pretend this is the library. We would set up the 30 units in the library, and all of the social studies classes for these particular two classes would come here each period throughout the whole day. They'd be supported on this experience to take their learning to the next level. Then we would do it with a different grade level the next day. So it would take some support through technology and Donna Freymeyer, but it will be well worth it, and I think, fun as well.
Is this a tool that's been used with the library and the media specialists?
We did some training with Windermere and with Smallwood already, so we see the library and media specialist as part of that connection to this work. At this point, we don't think it's independent that a teacher would just take it and go with it, but as we work with the library and media specialists in each building, those kits may remain in the school, too. Right now, we have them here, and we're taking them out as they're needed. The also exciting part of this is our Erieum Bosse's talked about buying these and doing training. We already have them, and we're implementing them. So we're in a different place than most districts. You see the commercials. But again, for educational purposes, we're sort of cutting-edge in this area, which is exciting.
I had a question. Dr. Sean Feld, the International Institute speaker, and wonder who it was and what in a little more detail.
Yeah. If, Mr. Pigeon, do you know the lady's name that was part of, I missed the introduction?
May Shogha was our presenter, and she is, you know, a key piece of their education and outreach in the community.
Just example, a couple of points you covered.
I think either they, a lot of the focus was on deeper understanding of the immigrant community specifically to Western New York and some of the challenges they bring as learners. And that kind of segued into, you know, some conversations about norms, how different cultures present as learners and things that you've got to be aware of that will help you enhance your relationship with them. And then we kind of, you scaffold that up to some of our own staff, like our Susan Lash, who's our ENL specialist, kind of moving into the instructional realm. How do you take this information and really, what can we do differently as instructors to help engage the students? You know, going back to the International Institute, a really good sense of, you know, the challenges that they have and really the aspects of the immigrant and refugee community and their acclamation to, when they enter Western New York, how they're supported and how we can support them.
Significant amount of time was spent on that last piece Mr. Pigeon mentioned, the difference between immigrants and refugees and the challenges they face upon arrival. And I think the term that was used was cultural competency. And, you know, how can we, you know, develop cultural competency, excuse me, it's easy for me to say, over the course of our time in working with kids? And what does that mean for us as we're instructing them? So it was very informative, very interesting. It was, I thought then the transition to the instructional component by our ENL specialist was very timely and well-presented.
There were a couple examples, too. One of them sticks out of my mind, the idea that if you're talking to a student and they might think they're being reprimanded, they may not look at you because they're showing you respect. And you might be frustrated with them, but saying, "Look at me now," you know, because you're not looking at me, and they feel like they're in trouble.
Cultural awareness.
So they're being overly respectful, and then you're frustrated. So that idea of common sense and also being able to talk to people, that she explained it's good to ask people and have that conversation, that there's some common sense to it, but also having that understanding not to require that again or to understand, "I know that's your culture, but please feel safe to look at me in the face," you know, and having that conversation, too. So some of those things, again, when we have this type of, you know, anything with cultural awareness, I think that pragmatic approach served us well, and feedback was positive, so.
I'd have some thought to do that, make that part of your presentation.
Our administrators spent a significant amount of time conducting needs assessments, both over the summer as well as in the beginning part of this year, to make sure that the professional development was timely and relevant to folks. We front-loaded our professional development this year in our calendar, so we have three days before students arrive. And then this last week was our last day for the year, but we had heard from folks that they're more productive days when they're earlier in the year because it provides more opportunity for implementation of the material. So tremendous amount of work from our administrative team and under Dr. Sean Feld's leadership. Thank you. Of the last piece of the superintendent's report, I would like to welcome Mr. John D'Angelo, our Director of Pupil Personnel, up to the podium. He is going to be talking a little bit about some of the ENL programming we're doing in the district. It is a report on Title III, which is a federal title program where we receive an allocation of funds that allows us to do what I believe is some innovative programming to help some of our students with language acquisition as well as content acquisition. Welcome, Mr. D'Angelo, and congratulations on your first presentation as an Amherst administrator.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Penella, colleagues and community. Thank you for having me here this evening to report on our Title III programs and updates for our programs. Again, as Superintendent Penella indicated, focus tonight will be on our district's ENL program with regard to Title III funding and grant allocations. So provide a brief overview and highlighting some of our newer Title III programming that's in store for us this evening. Scattered throughout, I have some pictures, and we have some video, providing some firsthand accounts of some of our programming. And some of the pictures you'll see are from some of our field trips that participants from last year went on within the area to support some of the programming that I will describe here. But before going into that, I just wanted to go back to some of our acronyms and terminology in the world of English as a New Language Learner. We do have Ls, and again, Ls are the students, the English Language Learner, formerly what we refer to as Language English Proficient. Then we have our ESOL, that's our teacher, and then our ENL program, which is the English as a New Language program. So just a brief overview. I understand there was some presentation in the past for a longer list of acronyms. There's a litany of acronyms that I could go through, but not at this time. So in terms of the allocation, approximately $50,000 in funds have been allocated to support our ENL and immigrant populations. And the point here in terms of our programming and looking at our Title III programming is, it's there to supplant the instructional piece, there to support the instructional piece, and not necessarily to take away from the daily instruction that occurs within our classes when we are delivering our ENL programming to our students. So it's really a supportive piece in our after-school programming. And our programming currently is, we do have an after-school, two-day-a-week program that is continuation of last year's program for our after-school, and this is elementary, middle, and high school. And there's some variability in terms of how the services are delivered or how the program is delivered, and I'll go through a little bit of specifics in terms of each of the levels. But in a nutshell, so to speak, when we look at some of the funding under our LEAP funds, that is to support our staffing, for example, again, our after-school programming and the potential to have summer programming. So the grant allocation for our LEAP funds went to the staffing of the program. And then we also, back in 2015, used some of this funding to purchase technology and tablets, and that are Google Platforms. And so we do have upwards to 40 tablets that we do available for the program that has been utilized during the course of last year and will be utilized again this year. Some specifics in terms of immigrant funds for this year, 2016-17, we contributed some of these funds to our Imagine Learning Adaptive Technology Program. That's something that is district-wide, but originally was put in place and created for ENL students in mind. The good news is that it's expanded into a broader base of learners. So that's an interesting component, and we'll touch about that, we'll talk about that just briefly as I go through the remainder of the presentation. In terms of update, trends in student data for our English as a New Language Learner, we have had sustained increases with our L population over the past six years, so that continues, although there is a little bit of stability over the last 2015 to what we have this year, and I'll cover that in just a moment. We do have a wide range of language variances for 2016-17. Twenty-one languages are currently spoken. And we also have, in terms of special education services, connected with students that are also eligible for ENL services. Fifteen special education students this year compared to six from last year. So as indicated, let's look at some numbers historically and current. So on this grid here, we're looking at our student population, our staffing, our teaching. So, on this grid here, we're looking at our student population, our staffing, our, our teaching staff as well as our student-teacher ratio. So, let me go back to 2011 and 12 where we had 71 students in total. And that represented 2.5 teaching staff with a ratio of 28 students to one teacher. You'll notice a trend in the ratio that starts to decrease. And I want to note particularly, if we look at 2015 and 16, we see that that ratio went from 28 to one to a 20 to one ratio. And that's contributed to new regulations with ENL services where we provide them in a co-teaching model or co-teaching forum where we have an ENL teacher that's pushing into the classroom. And we also do have a pull-out feature, depending on what your language acquisition rate is, will depend on the level of service you'll receive. But we understood that in 2015-16, our ratio would decrease to 20 to one. And now, we see a further decrease slightly of ratio for 2016-17 to a 19 to one ratio. And I just want to note, some years ago, in anticipation of these new mandates, the district was looking towards a goal of 20 to one level ratio. I'm here to report that we have met that goal. So, I just wanted to, as a side note to our conversation here. So, again, looking at last year, 2015-16, we had 141 students. And this year, around 145 is the current total. So, you see a little bit of a tail-off, so to speak, as far as that progressive increase. Not quite as progressive as you note from year to year. Whether or not that's going to be a long-term trend remains to be seen, but something that we certainly will be aware of. Let's talk about the structure of our program. So, when we look at the structure of our program, a little bit different between levels. At the elementary school, we have three separate units of study. And what it looks like is we have the students there for three separate cycles. And not all students can participate in all three cycles. And that's because we have roughly 95 ENL students at the elementary level. And therefore, we have students participating in the after-school programming on a rotating basis. Some students may be able to attend two of the rotations, just as an example. But we, at this point, do have to limit some of the participation based on the large number that we do have. So, what we do is we'll identify the students to participate in each unit. Oftentimes, if you have a family member, you have a brother and a sister, maybe in a different grade level, we want to keep them together because it's convenient for the family to come and pick their two children up at that same time. We also then work to define and develop a project such as geography, local history, et cetera. It's a project-based piece at the elementary level. We also have a field trip that's built in related to the unit of study. So, it's experiential as well as it is with just good reteaching of key concepts, vocabulary and so on. It's the experiential piece that we also infuse within the program. There's cultural components as well as a celebratory piece where families are invited for foods and activities. And I have to say, as my introduction to the district, going to our annual event that we had at Lindemere this year was fantastic. It was an international night that was well done. And I had a lot of pride just walking through the doors for the first time saying, "Boy, what a fantastic program we have here." And it really was reinforced by that night for me, brought my daughter with me, she had a great time. Learned a little Mandarin. As far as our middle and high school, more content reinforcement, vocabulary reinforcement, using the vocabulary that's within the classroom, the sciences for, for example. We understand that the vocabulary reinforcement is a very important piece to the success of our students, especially our students who are newly acquiring a language or working on their own language acquisition. So, the vocabulary and content reinforcement is key in the middle and high school levels. We also do have cultural components as well as a celebratory component for our families as well at the middle and high school level. What I would like to do is give you a little bit of brief background in terms of one of the programs that we use, if you recall, with some of our immigrant funding with Imagine Learning. And portions were, were contributed from the, from the, from that funding source to Imagine Learning. And as, as a brief description, Imagine Learning is really considered a robust program. It's a program that adapts activities based upon the needs of the child. And you have, again, language acquisition, correct pronunciation of words and terminology. We also can use the child's home language, native language, to assist with the acquisition of the English language. That's a term called translinguaging. Again, transferring your language of your native to the English language. If we see the term kibeta or head, and then we see the English version of head, that is one very basic way to explain the translinguaging piece. And it's a nice component that exists in Imagine Learning. There's also an audio feature as well. So, a child themselves can speak into a recorder, hear, hear their own voice played back. So, they get a sense of how their pronunciation is. So, there's that element. And also, the teacher can also assess the progress that the child has as well through that venue. So, this video I have here is from a, a group of folks at Lindemere Schools. So, I'd like to first off thank the, the folks at Lindemere with Mrs. Lavine and Mr. Mosier who put this video together, as well as we do have some other folks at the Lindemere School represented.
We are really excited at both elementary schools in our district this year. In the primary classrooms, we're using Imagine Learning. Imagine Learning is a program that tailors to each individual student's strengths and weaknesses. It focuses on literacy, things like phonics, fluency, decoding, spelling, comprehension. It's really exciting to see the kids motivated and engaged in a program that's specific to their needs.
This program seems to be different to me because of the engagement factor. Because in, on one day, the kids can be reading, listening, watching a video, singing a song. Another way it makes it different is there's a ton of support for our ELL learners. And a third way it is different is I am able to listen to their oral fluency that they practice independently when they think they are alone.
Imagine Learning is awesome because when you get words right, all the basketball is going to the hoop and you also, and spelling words with basketballs.
Some added features of the program.
Imagine Learning Classroom Edition is bringing early literacy to the classroom like never before and putting it right at your students' fingertips.
Imagine Learning is awesome.
So, as you can see, initial support from our most important, or some of our children, as you saw there. Moving forward, I wanted to provide a little bit of background in terms of our high school program, a little more specifics. Susan Lash is one of our ENL teachers that was mentioned earlier tonight and provides after-school programming, again, two days a week with some of our high school students. And some of her thoughts and, and words in terms of what practice looks like at the high school.
The after-school program has been absolutely essential for us at the high school. Because of the new change in state regulations, we no longer pull out and get to have a separate class with all the students. We only push in to their English class. So, that leaves all the other subjects that they can help for, which includes Global 1, Global 2, U.S. History, Biology, Health, Economics and Government. And also, but there's also a million other electives and other things that they really need specific help with vocabulary, syntax and grammar in order for them to be successful.
Just a brief overview of our high school program. And again, thank you to Mrs. Lash and her after-school program. Any thoughts, any questions?
I do have a question. The Imagine Learning program that, that is at the elementary level, the content of that, is there content for like the older grades at the elementary level? So, it seems less young and, you know, because you've got these kids who are coming in.
Yes.
And, you know, the, the, the basic young, you know, seeming stories and things like that, you know, don't seem to make a lot of sense for the older kids.
Correct. So, it's through fifth grade in terms of what the, what we could consider quote-unquote the target audience, so to speak. So, yes, it is through fifth grade. It may not necessarily be for everyone in terms of where they are developmentally. But when you look at the bare bones of what the program looks like, it is really, it's very effective. But yes, there is that piece. And I've had these conversations with some of my colleagues that, yeah, sometimes the platform, as far as developmental, is, is something to consider. I'd be interested to see if the folks who created Imagine Learning would expand that offering to a wider range of audience. But it can be utilized for some of the upper grades, but I do understand your point.
Are there other resources available to those upper grades? I know, you know, one of the teachers I was helping out with photocopying and she was trying to find those A to Z books that made sense developmentally for her fourth graders, you know, that didn't, but still were, you know, easier readers. So, are, are you working on other things in terms of that kind of support?
There are existing resources and we, we are looking at, at all times, what are more appropriate resources perhaps that we're, we understand if we have some limitations in some areas, that yes, we do have current resources. But yes, looking for something more specific. At the upper levels, it really is about that reinforcement of the content, the vocabulary and concepts. So, that piece, we can at times use classwork as a vehicle to provide further reinforcement. So, there is that traditional sense in terms of providing supports for students in the upper levels. But it is something worth looking at in terms of whether or not we could find a more appropriate or just expand our repertoire of what it is that we're providing.
We, we are implementing Imagine Learning in the primary grades in both schools. And certainly, one of the concerns you identified is one of the reasons why that's where we're starting. Our goal from a technology committee standpoint is to try to streamline some of the software that we offer. More and more, you're seeing online platforms and online software becoming available. And we would like to pick some of the more power player ones like Imagine Learning that we make available to our staff and provide subsequent training and then also some consistency for our kids as they flow through the program here in the district. So, that's one of the tasks that is on Dr. Schoenfeld's list as well with the technology committee and the curriculum leaders to really identify in those core subject areas, the online softwares that we want to subscribe to and consistently offer across the district. This is a place to start though.
Question about, with the, again, with the Imagine Learning, what is the percentage of time that's used for adaptive learning? And what is the percentage of time that's used for ELL population? And how does that differ?
In, in the after-school program specifically, is your question? Or just in general?
Is it not, is it, maybe it's not used during the day or is it?
Yeah, I, so I'll explain my understanding of it as well. Students will take a beginning assessment, so all of our students each year will do that. That sort of benchmark, see you at a certain level of what types of, what types of activities you'd be offered in the program as you work along. There's, I'll say it's a sweet spot of anywhere from 70 minutes to 100 minutes throughout a week. That's how much time you want your students on. So, the teachers, if you think about primary classrooms, they do a lot of station work and students will move from place to place. We have computers that would, they're being distributed about eight per classroom. They would have a table set up with these computers that the students would go on for about 15 or 20 minutes. The computer program also keeps track of, I'll say, active engagement. You can sit in front of their computer and tap your pencil or just watch what's happening in the classroom. That wouldn't count as active participation. But there would be data tracked on students of how long were you actively engaged? And we want our students for really a reliability to be on at least that 70, you know, for fidelity purposes, 70 to 100 minutes. So, it's a process initially, getting into a routine with the students. And then, as the students are on the programs, it will do some of this again. It's all adaptive. So, if you're an ENL student or not, or if you're a, a high flyer and you're really successful, it will challenge you, it will meet you where you are at your benchmark and it will start to cycle through the different activities. It will prompt you at some point to do the fluency. And you'll see the letters, you'll read it, you'll record it into your headset. So, all the students have these headsets on that we were able to purchase that has a microphone, almost like a pilot or something. But the student literally will read what's happening, it records it, it keeps track of that. So, at a conference or at the end of the year, you can even listen to Johnny or Jane and see what it's like and then compare it to later on. So, those types of things, when, when you ask that question, I think that jumped out to me.
So, it's all of the students are engaged in this?
Yeah, all the students. Again, it was developed by the company more for ENL, but they realized the target audience was more than that. And when the feedback came back, we piloted this last year as well at Lindemere and a little bit at Smallwood and feedback was, was good then. And we had presentations in September and teachers unanimously said we would, you know, make a shift in the way we instruct with our stations, make that one of our stations. We still have guided work with the teacher, independent work and free play. This is one more option that really a teacher can't do all that it does. And the one thing we didn't talk about at all, it gives us data and you're able to shape what you do. And when you're working on the scaffolding of the ELA that we're working on, we're able to then use these as resources. And there are resources you can print based on the needs of the students to, again, it's, it's just all blended together. So, in time, I think we'll become even more proficient and effective of, of taking the program itself to a higher level because it'll be ingrained in the work we're doing.
I had a question on the, the number of students. So, I don't know who wants to take it. But what I was wondering, is there, is there a bubble of students in any particular grade?
Oh, I see. I don't have those numbers specifically today to speak to, but I could certainly provide a breakdown. I, I know that at our elementary level, we're at roughly 95, as I indicated. At our middle school level, 21. And then, we could do the math subtracting by 141, 145 for this year to, to, to look at the high school numbers. But if you're looking for particular grade breakdowns, I could provide that.
I guess my, my other question was, does it tend to be a transient population? Or to become in kindergarten and graduate?
It's, it's a good question. There are at times, there's a level of, of transientness, yes, that does exist. But yet, our numbers are still progressively going up. But do we have other students that are moving in to this district temporarily and then moving to another district and then someone else comes and eventually replaces them, so to speak? There, there is.
I guess I'm trying to get a sense or a feel of what that, you know, what that looks like.
Well, I, you know, I, with Mr. Bellisle back there.
Yeah, I did an answer.
And I know he's, he's worked in this role previously. You know, given our location to several universities, one of the things that we do experience is that universities offer exchange programs or, or work-study programs for adults, which sometimes they come with children. And we've experienced that at times, they are for a fixed amount of times, six months or a year, which would mean that the kids end up in school while they're enrolled here and their parents are in the program. And then ultimately, they might leave. So, that would contribute to some of the inconsistency or the, the change in enrollment. Mike, is there another piece that maybe you could speak to?
I can't remember the percentage per se, but I remember a lot of our dollars are driven by number of students who've come through the program. And when you look at those, they're at 150s, 160s, but in re-
But in reality, we had in the low 100s here at any one point in time, but they come and go. Transient seems to be within our Chinese and Arabic populations, which tend to be our heaviest. They come, they go, they go back to their home country, they come back, or they go to another school and they come back, what have you. The heaviest grouping is at K to 3. We had the heaviest group come through, we had 20-some at one year and then sort of followed through. They just keep, sort of just consistently coming in at about that number. So Windermere's gone from essentially about 30-some students to almost 100 in the last seven years.
Do, does a student graduate from being an ENL learner or a BLL learner?
It is possible, yes. They take, every year they take what's called the NICE-SLAP assessment at the end of the year. And depending on the level of what they score determines whether or not that they are considered then commanding of the language. And then there is a transitional service that's provided because of that status. And then, yes, they would graduate, so to speak, from that ENL status. But again, you know, it's a fair question to ask. What does this look like in terms of long-term for a child and whether or not they are going to require that level of service? There's another piece to look at as well, as some would say, that the way the test has changed, that NICE-SLAP has changed, it's as much a measure of reading comprehension in the English language for a non-ENL student as it is for a student with language barriers. So there's that component that's out there as far as discussion about this assessment that's just been modified to this point, which some say could prove more challenging for our students to test out, so to speak.
That would be one of the reasons why you would see the numbers decline as you go to middle and high school. Though you're right in that sense that if they score a certain level on the NICE-SLAP or even the ELA exam in grades three through eight, then they would not qualify for services, ENL services. And that's ultimately the goal. Well, thank you very much, Mr. D'Angelo. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Belile. He was, in his previous role, instrumental in getting this programming up and running last year and in previous years. And as you saw in the video, Mrs. Lavine helped initiate a pilot with this program. And she actually traveled to Utah and went through a three-day, pretty intensive training to make sure that we thoroughly investigated it as an option for our students. So two, two very strong contributors to this initiative. Thank you. I think we're ready for new business.
All right, I'll need a motion for new business items.
I'd like to make a motion for new business items. F1, A through P, F2, A through I, and F3, C, D, F, G and I.
And a second?
A second.
Before we vote on it, I'd just like to acknowledge we do have two retirements of employees we're approving. Ms. DiLorenzo, a foreign language teacher at the high school. And we have Ms. Denler, a teacher at Windermere. So they're retiring as of January 2nd. Thank you, thank you for your service. All right, all of those in favor of new business items, F1, A through P, 2, A through I, and 3, C, D, F, G and I, please say I.
I.
I. Motion carries 6-0. So do we have any follow-up action items?
Uh, in fact, Mr. D'Angelo provides the grade breakdown of the ELL students.
With that, we will need a motion to convene to executive session. Second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor convene to an executive session, please say a.
A.
A. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.